I call this meeting in Saginaw City Council to order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Please be seated. Item number two is invocation for that councilmember Cindy Bighorse.
If you would pray with me, please. Gracious Father, we just thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon this city. We thank you for the staff and the citizens who have just stepped up to meet the challenges that we face this day. We appreciate each and every one of them for their love and their passion for this city. We ask, Lord, that you continue to lead and guide us where we need to go. Again, we thank you for all your blessings. We ask, Lord, that you watch over this council tonight and give us clear understanding of the items that lay before us. These things we ask in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Cindy. Item three is audio participation. That's covered on the screen. Please silence your devices, cell phones, et cetera, so we can have a good meeting. So we are all social distancing tonight. I hope everybody can hear me okay through this thing. Keep wanting to pull it down, but that defeats the purpose, so let me know if you can't hear me. I'd like to say welcome to the folks watching online. I hope there's people watching online. Please let us know how the audio and video quality is and let us know if you have any questions. Item number four is the consent agenda. Action regarding minutes of April 7th. Action regarding resolution 2020-2 to deny the DCRF amendment. C action regarding individual project order from Kimley-Horn Associates for design of Old Decatur M W J Bose. D is action regarding resolution 2020-13 regarding the city asylum participation in Tarrant County's community development block grant. E is action regarding public highway overpass agreement with Union Pacific Railroad for the Valley of Oslo Ridge Overpass. F action regarding ordinance 2020-11 amending Saginaw City Code section 6-37 keeping of animals and fowl. G is action regarding award of contract for the East McIlroy Boulevard curb and gutter improvement. I have requests to pull item E, I believe, from the consent agenda. Any other requests or questions on the consent agenda? Yeah, if not, I will accept the motion for A, B, C, D, F, and G.
Mayor, I'd like to pull for B.
B?
Yes, sir.
Because we will pull B and E. Any others? So I want, I'm ready for a motion for A, C, D, F, and G. Charlie second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed or unopposed? Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum. Mr. Farr is unable to join us tonight. So item B, pull that up, is action regarding resolution 2020-12 to deny the DCRF amendment by Encore. For that, Dolph Johnson.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution. Encore has requested an increase based on certain criteria, and this resolution is one that all of the member cities of the, were a group of the steering cities, committee cities for Encore were consortium, and one of the reasons for having these consortiums is for rate cases like this. So our council suggested that we deny this rate increase, and it gives our consortium attorneys time to go through the numbers and make sure that they're justified. So that's what this is.
Cindy, you have a question?
Yes, sir, again. We were talking about in here about securing legal counsel, and there's no mention about what the financial impact will be.
There is no financial impact. That's included in the annual fees we pay to be a member of the consortium.
Okay, so even if our petition is denied, there's still no charge.
No charge.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on 4B? If not, I will entertain a motion. Okay?
I'll second.
Charlie second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed or unopposed? All right. Now moving to, we're for E. 4E is action regarding public highway overpass agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company. For that, Rick tries.
Yes, Mayor, council, this is about the 55th permit required for the beginning of construction of the overpass. We called last month, we approved a similar permit for EMSA. The amount of permit, $51,000, which is restricted for ride, how the overpass over the roadway. Fifty thousand is the construction management, construction compensation payment associated with that. Fifty-one thousand, the EMSA agreement is about 331,000, so we've got a growing rate on this. However, they do have an equity agreement that the fifty thousand for labor by P P is, is just an estimate, it's subject to escalation of price.
Yes, so what was, that was Patrick's question. What was his question on this specifically?
Yeah, councilmember Farr, Mayor, council, his one question was, does the agreement represent an increase in amounts previously communicated? As Rick mentioned, it's less than previously communicated, but we don't know what the ultimate cost would be, which is built in the project budget.
Okay. Any other questions on 4E? Now I will entertain a motion for 4E. Cindy?
Mayor, I move we accept item 4E as presented.
Thank you. Valerie second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Rick. Moving forward, item number five, proclamation, first responder month. Says me, but actually it's Mayor Protem, Valerie Tankersley.
Whereas individuals from both the Saginaw Fire Department and Saginaw Police Department come together as first responders to protect our ci, oh, excuse me, our citizens of Saginaw and aid the public in the event of an emergency. And whereas every day first responders are on the front line working to save lives and protect our citizens while receiving help and saving first aid. And whereas first responders are ready to aid the people in our communities 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas first responders are the first in best defense against all emergencies that may threaten our community, including COVID-19. And whereas COVID-19 has brought about new challenges for our first responders as they must find ways to safely provide protection for our citizens as well as themselves. And whereas our first responders have responded to those challenges and continue to perform their duties regardless of the risks to their personal health. Now, therefore, I talk with both mayor, for the city of Saginaw, the quarter of the month of May 2020, to be the first responder month of the city of Saginaw, and encourage, encourage all residents to join me in honoring our first responders of the Saginaw Fire Department and the Saginaw Police Department who work together to keep Saginaw safe and healthy.
Normally, we read pictures and handshakes, but we will forego that. Just say thank y'all. Thank you very much, folks. Item number six is Educator Appreciation Week. Again, that is Mayor Protem, Valerie Tankersley.
Whereas Eagle Mountain Saginaw Independent School District encompasses 73 square miles in the northwest area of Tarrant County. And whereas at Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD serves Saginaw, Blue Mountain, and portions of the city of Fort Worth, and unincorporated Tarrant County. And whereas more than 20,000 students are enrolled and rich and educated in 15 elementary schools, six middle schools, three high schools, a high school of choice, an alternative learning center, an early childhood center, and a career and technology center. And whereas Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD has 1,307 educators in the district that plan and deliver engaging lessons for over 20,000 children on a daily basis. And whereas COVID-19 has presented a new challenge in 2020 that calls Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD and its educators to quickly find a new way to continue to educate and communicate with students via EMS distance learning. And whereas through the EMS distant learning, the educators have transferred their physical classrooms into digital classrooms, which has allowed them to continue and provide engaging and meaningful learning for all students from pre-K through grade 12. Now, therefore, I talk with both mayor and city of Saginaw, the quarter of the week of May 18 through 24, 2020, to be Educator Appreciation Week in the city of Saginaw. And as it all residents join us in honoring the educators who provide construction and support for our staff, our students every day, whether it be physical or online classroom setting, as they educate the children in our community with compassion and enthusiasm. Then we have one more. Whereas International Leadership of Texas locally paid through grade eight campus I L T Saginaw in the city of Saginaw 2017, whereas 1,460 students are enrolled and rich and educated at I L T Saginaw. And whereas I L T Saginaw has 120 educators that plan and deliver, deliver engaging lessons for students on a daily basis. And whereas COVID-19 has presented a new challenge in 2020 that calls I L T Saginaw to quickly find a new way to continue to educate and communicate with students in non-traditional ways. And whereas the educators have transferred their physical classrooms into virtual online classrooms, which has allowed them to continue to provide engaging and meaningful learning for all students from kindergarten through grade eight. Therefore, I talk with both mayor and city of Saginaw, the quarter of the week of May 18 through 24, to be Educator Appreciation Week in the city of Saginaw. And as it all residents join us in honoring the educators who provide information and support for our students every day, whether it be in physical or online classroom setting, as they educate the children in our community with compassion and enthusiasm.
Thank you, Valerie. We are item number seven, oath of office for councilmember place four and place six. For that, City Secretary Janice England.
Okay, Mayor, we'll get councilmember Tucker and councilmember Copeland to come up to the part, or the front here. A little different than we've ever done. About to kind of improvise. Okay, if y'all would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
State your name.
Mary Copeland.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Saginaw City Council.
Of Saginaw City Council.
Place number.
Place six.
Place four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
This state.
This state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. That's it. We appreciate both of you running again and.
Congratulations, Charlie and Mary. Thank you, Janice. Item number eight is presentation of service pins for Mayor Protem Tankersley and councilmember Farr. We will put off Mr. Farr until the next meeting when he's able to attend in person. I do have a pin for Ms. Mayor Protem. It is a five-year pin. It is a beautiful, lovely five-year pin. I think it's got a diamond in there. Looks like a diamond. Very beautiful. I can't believe it's been five years. It's been a pleasure serving with you. Really appreciate all your hard work. I will take a picture with you and hug you, but we'll just, you want to stand up? What do you want us to do, Keith? We'll stand up. I'll hold this beautiful pin. Can you see the pin? What can you see the pin? I'm smiling. No, thank you, Valerie. Well done. All right, item number nine is election of Mayor Protem. With Mr. Farr's absence, I would propose we push this off till we have a full house. But that's really at the council's discretion. What would y'all like to do? Anybody have any thoughts? Is everybody okay with postponing until next meeting? I prefer to have a full house, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay. So we don't take any action on that. Okay, moving forward. Item number 10 is consideration action to approve funds for the Art and Community Program mural. Keith Reinhardt, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. How are y'all? Coming to you today for another of hopefully many more beautiful art murals in our community. We did one back in, I think it was approved, I want to say it was in October of last year. They started the work in December on a mural at the Northwest Plumbing Building and did a historic photo of, with that, the Northwest Plumbing Building was our original fire station. We had a photo that we gave to the artist, and he recreated it to perfection on the side of, on the north side of that building. It was wonderful. We've had nothing but compliments, and the only complaints I think we've received is we want more. And that's why, that's why we're here today. We've talked with Adam Davenport, who is the artist who did the previous one, and looked at, Keeps Saginaw Beautiful Committee has met. We actually met about this and talked about it in January and February. We're set to vote on it in March 16th, which is the day everything shut down. So we haven't met until, actually, yesterday. They voted to, I think Dolph may have a picture of you, but what they decided to do is to do an art mural on the side of JR's Cafe. JR's Cafe is also the original location of Green's Grocery Mart. Talking to Mike Green about this, we had several photos to choose from. His one main request was that, is there any way you can get my parents in there? He had a photo that was very dark, it was really kind of hard to see of them together, but, but Adam is amazing, and just in his mock-up of what it would look like, he got them in the photo, and it looks great. What Keeps Saginaw Beautiful Committee voted to approve, or voted to approve funds for $10,000 to do this art mural. He'll be, if approved by the city council, he'll be, get started probably in June. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. Sure? Yes. Take the what? He can, he can move some things around. One of the, one of the requests of the, of the Keeps Sagin, I keep wanting to call him beautification, I'm sorry, of the Keeps Saginaw Beautiful Committee was to do something similar to what he did with the fire station, where he put, you know, Saginaw's first fire station. And the request from Keeps Saginaw Beautiful was to do something similar to that on the side of the building, because if you're driving down that road and you see Green's Grocery, you might get confused and think it's Green's Grocery if you're not familiar with Saginaw, when it's actually JR's Cafe. So we may put something, have him put something up there and maybe back the car. The original photo had, had the truck right where it is. He might be able to back it up a little bit to get more, because the window is kind of in the way. Or the truck's in the way, one of the two, however you look at it. But yes, long, long answer, I guess.
Other questions? Yes, Cindy?
I have a question for you. I actually had an opportunity to talk to Adam when he was here taking a break, and he does phenomenal work, and even though he's, lives in a rival town to my high school football team, he's still a likable guy.
If you ever get a chance to talk to Adam, set aside about an hour and a half to two hours, because that guy can, he's a good talker.
That's, that's about how long's break was.
Friend, super friendly guy.
He, he really is, and, and just, just an amazing artist. But we have amazing artists here in town as well, and I'm just wondering why we're not utilizing them. I know that we've had some people talk to, and I know councilmember Tankersley and myself, and they're willing to do it for free with, you know, the cost of materials, not $10,000.
We're actually, at the next council meeting, one of the things that they voted on last, last night at the Keeps Saginaw Beautiful was to do a mural in William Houston, Highland Station Park, and we've contacted one of our local artists to do that, and.
Okay. I just, I mean, if we're doing Saginaw, I would prefer to keep it in Saginaw. Again, nothing against what Adam does. He's just an amazing artist. Anybody that can replicate a photograph to his level of detail, including light reflections off of windows and things, is definitely something to be admired, and I think we've got a great price for the work that he does. But again, you know, my preference is that, you know, we keep it local.
We have, you know, with the exception of that, of the one on Northwest Plumbing, we have kept it local, because all throughout, wait, keep saying William Houston. Willow, sorry, Willow Creek Park. I think the fumes from my gum is getting up into my, I can't think. Willow Creek Park, we have a number of art projects that were painted by the same local artists, you know, the sewer manhole covers, the outflow of drainage. She's done a lot of work for us, and will continue to do some more work for us.
Remind me, where's that $10,000 coming from? Is that the Keeps Saginaw Beautiful?
Keeps Saginaw Beautiful. The, there's a, residents have the opportunity to donate a dollar for their monthly water bill. This will be funded from that.
That's what I thought.
Not account.
Great, thank you. Council, other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we, that we pass, what is it? That we pass item 10, agenda item, consideration action to approve of the funds for the Art Community Program mural.
Thank you, Charles. Charlie, you have a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Keith. Item 11 is you again, isn't it? Thank you, Keith.
This is something we did, we have this on the agenda. We did this last time with Adam, and, actually, not with Adam, but with, during that time, we did it with Northwest Plumbing Building, where we had a lease agreement for the mural to be on the side of their building. We did that with Northwest Plumbing. This is the same type of thing. It's, it's a 10-year, I don't have my glasses on, it's a 10-year lease, a dollar a year, so a 10-year, 10-year lease to be able to put that on his building, and that the building does not get torn down or repainted or whatever during that time. Any technical questions about the lease? I'd be glad to pass it on to Mr. Brand.
Council, any questions?
Questions concerned?
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to uphold the consideration action regarding lease agreement with Michael Brand on the mural to be painted.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Charlie, second. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed or unopposed? Thank you, Keith. Well done. Let's get moving on this. All right, so we are at item number 12. Consideration action regarding approval ordinance 2020-10 authorizing issuance of sale, City Saginaw Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2020. For that, Kim Quinn, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We, I have the pleasure of presenting the results of the bids for the refunding bonds. The next page, you'll see that we had seven bids on our refunding of the $1,045,000, and we got 1.11%. I mean, that's really unbelievable. You can see there's a pretty widespread there. The highest was 2.9, which is still good, but obviously we'll go with First National Bank of Texas. And the next page shows that the result of refunding at that 1.11% is that we will save $124,184 over a period of 10 years.
It's amazing.
Yep, really great. And that's net of the issuance costs.
All right. Free money. We like that.
Yep. So that'll save us on the debt service side.
Any questions? Anybody have problems saving $100,000?
Do you think we can do better? I'm kidding.
All right, any other questions for Kim? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance number 2020-10 authorizing the issuance of Cellicity, Saginaw Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2020.
Thank you, ma'am. Charlie second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Kim. Well done. All right, we are on item number 13. Consideration action regarding recommendation and planning is zoning commission for approval of a preliminary plat for the square. For that, Rick tries, Director of Public Works.
Mayor, Council, you recall last year, you approved an economic development agreement with AMJK Development LLC for the square property located just north of Walmart between Old Decatur and Saginaw Boulevard. Also with that was PD zoning, which you authorized or approved. The next step is logical step is the preliminary plat, which was bringing to you to deny it. There's a copy there on your screen. We've been diligently working through drainage issues and other issues related to the property, but we're at a point now that we're asking for approval. Planning and zoning commission met last week, and unanimously recommended approval for the city council. So if you have any questions, Mike Clark, the engineers here, between us, hopefully we can answer any questions that you have.
Council, questions? You have a minute to find this on your packet. Since we have our esteemed attorney here, I have a question for him. Just if you could explain something to us that I know I've heard before, but I'd love to hear it again. Preliminary plat, and this is something that it took me a while to understand. So a preliminary plat and we have a final plat, but council only gets to see it one time. Preliminary plat is our only bite at this apple, because per state law, if, correct me if I'm wrong, final plat is approved by P and Z, that's it, per state law. Will you explain that real quick till we understand? Maybe folks haven't heard that before.
Well, certainly. So state law actually contemplates that the final plat is only heard by P and Z. You can elect to require the additional approval of council, but if that's not done pursuant to your subdivision ordinance, then Planning and Zoning Commission is the final decision-making body on the plat. And candidly, when it's, when it is approved by P and Z pursuant to law, that, that is the final saying.
If, for example, if, if P and Z approves the final plat, and the council comes back and says, no, we don't want to do that, you have some legal issues there, don't you?
That, that's right. Absolutely. Yes, because they are designated as the final authority, so.
So take that, keep that in mind, council. Just good information to know. So any questions about this final plat, or preliminary plat, sorry? A couple of questions. I know that we have worked through with Tech Dot. Any update on the Tech Dot issues and where they are?
Tech Dot plans are in final phase of review by Tech Dot. You might have read in the paper that, that they were a victim of ransomware statewide in their software.
Did hear that.
And so just another nail in the coffin, it seems, on that permit. They're unable to complete the review. This project has gone back and forth between a traditional AFA, advanced funding agreement, which is similar to what you approved on the overpass, to what they call a locally, an LOS, which is a different form or, or a structure agreement that they have, when the local government actually lets the project and manages the project with their inspection. So they've gone back and forth on that, on that permitting scheme, and finally have settled on the LOS. So we expect to receive a form soon that will come back to council for your approval. It'll be, again, authorizing funds that we would use to pay Tech Dot to inspect the project, et cetera, et cetera, just like an AFA. It'll look and smell like an AFA, except that we will have the right to let the project, advertise and let the project, rather than going through the state's process. So that's kind of where we're at. That's a long way.
Would that be a quicker process or a more efficient process for we handle it than they?
Theoretically, it's a more efficient process, because the state letting schedule is three to six months. So, so, and ours is, you know, according to the state statute, which is you can get stuff in the council within a month, so.
Okay.
After we advertise.
It sounds like good news, but, okay.
Yeah, it is theoretically more efficient, but what has happened is just that they've gone back and forth, so that is, has been kind of perplexing for staff to try, and the engineer to try to work through that with, with the state.
Oh, there it is. So did we get all our, I believe I know the answer to this. We do not require any additional land for drainage. We, the developer does not require any additional land for drainage. What is included, what is included in this plat is all that is needed to satisfy retention, correct?
Right. There was, actually detention is not required, because the, the development had a zero impact on adjacent properties, downstream properties.
Okay.
And so what you see on the plat on Old Decatur Road is, there will be a future outfall structure that will drain. And so, what you see on the plat on Odekater Road is there will be a future outfall structure that will drain there. It drains naturally at that point.
Okay.
And it will naturally drain across the church property to the north of the development and then re-enter the property, the developer's property, an outfall at 287. So, one of the lots is at Lot 6, I believe. There in the, the upper quadrant on the, on the west side is 100% drainage easement. So that was always meant to be open space. It was, the PD zoned that as open space. One of the requirements that was set by council at that time was to have a perpetual maintenance agreement. So, although you won't see the final plat again, you will see a maintenance agreement come across your desk for approval that will require that the developer of the apartment complex, which is to the south and west of that lot, will have perpetual maintenance responsibility for, for Lot 6, so.
You mentioned about the drainage. So there's no issue if it drains through that church property, but then back onto the square property? That's allowable?
The same natural drainage path today.
As is today, okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Counsel, other questions? Other issues on this?
We'll also add that, that Odekater, you recently approved an IPO to actually start the design on Odekater. So, of course, that would include drainage facilities. So I know the church has expressed issues in the past about water overtopping their parking lots, coming from the north and not originating on this development, you know, to the church. So, hopefully that will provide some relief at some point in the future when we're ready to, to actually construct Odekater North, so.
Yeah, timing wise, what was the timing wise for the square? What are we looking at?
Construction plans are underway, under review. We're in the final stages of those. Mr. Clark is addressing comments from the city and from our city engineer. As soon as those plans are approved and the Tech dot approves their plans, we plan to advertise those as one project, although two units, because Tech dot will have their unique provisions and contract documents. And then, of course, the square will have solely city provisions. So, the big variable really is Tech dot. I think that we'll be able to resolve our, our comments within weeks and be ready to advertise at least that part of it, so.
Okay. Very good.
Hopefully you'll see some form of agreement next month from Tech dot.
Next month, okay. That sounds good. Alright, counsel, any other issues? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 13, Consideration and Actions Regarding Recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for Approval of the Preliminary Plat for the Square.
Second.
Mayor, second? All those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, guys. Good luck. Alright, moving forward. Item number 14. So at 6:33, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval on a request for change in zoning of approximately 76.6 acres of the J. Walker Survey Abstract 1608. For that, Rick Chice.
Thank you, Mayor. This, of course, appeared first at the Planning and Zoning Meeting in April. We had some last-minute concerns expressed by the school district. Dorothy Parks with the developer, Providence Realty, here tonight, along with Mike Clark, the engineer. Ms. Parks met the school district and I think you received a memo from the city manager kind of explaining that process. They were concerned about the multifamily zoning and whether or not that would be market rate. And I believe that Ms. Parks is, in the group, has satisfied their concerns there. I provided a table in your memo, just to kind of compare and contrast existing zoning versus the proposed zoning. You can see that the area west of Lavon, there's a little tract of light industrial that was not there before. The multifamily portion has increased from MF1 and then the lighting, I mean, and then the community commercial, there's been a reduction. So proposed acreage, about 20.3, a community commercial, about 45 acres of multifamily and seven, a little over seven acres of industrial. Mr. Clark and I guess his team, if you have any questions, if you want to add anything to that, you're welcome to.
Counsel, what questions do you have on this? When I first looked at it, I had a couple of questions, because this, this, this figure's a little confusing to me, because you've got the yellow and all the different colors. So I believe my understanding is yellow is school property. That is not part of this development. Is that correct? And you want to approach? Can somebody answer that? I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure.
Hi, Michael Clark, Winkelman and Associates, 6750 Hillcrest Plaza, Suite 215, Dallas 75230.
Thank you.
The, the yellow, yellow, the mustard yellow, if you will, is, is the school property. That is correct. And then the, the burnt yellow, whatever, whatever color that is. Sorry, we're engineers, we're not artists. That is currently zoned MF, a bunch of it's zoned MF1 and we're really doing a lot of rearrangement. Apparently, I like to work for clients who do curved streets through property, I guess. Looks like the other plat almost, but it's really partially a rearrangement and then partially an increase in the, from MF1 to MF2 for, to allow us the density to build the things that people want to see. And then, the, pardon me, the LI on the west side is segregated by Lavon Drive and really more in skin keeping with the existing LI that's, that's adjacent to the creek as you move west.
But the other LI down on the bottom left corner, that's not part of this project. That's an existing LI.
That's correct.
Again, that's confusing, so when I looked at this, I wanted to make sure I understood it. So yeah, just the LI and that's seven point something acres, is what that is? Track D?
Track D, yes, sir. The ones with tracks on it are the ones being rezoned.
Yeah.
Correct.
Gotcha. So community, it was already zoned community commercial. So the only change is the MF1 piece? Is that correct? MF1?
Yes, sir, Mayor. The, although the acreage changed, but the multifamily portion of that zoning was MF1 or is MF1 on today's existing zoning map.
Right. Okay.
So it is an increase in density.
Yeah, just remind me what the difference between MF1 and MF2 is per zone?
Well, Rick's look, in my recollection, is it's 18 units to the acre to 24 units.
24, yeah, okay.
I'm not 100% certain, but I believe, I'm pretty certain enough to state it here.
Gotcha.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. That would necessitate an increase in parking as well? For more parking, for more, more parking? Different parking? Because you have, MF1 would have fewer parking spots than MF2 because you've got denser. Am I saying that right?
Presumably, yes, sir.
Okay. I'm just thinking out loud. Okay. Alright, counsel, other questions for this? Cindy?
I have a question. In light of the situation that we're living through today and with concerns that this will come back in the fall, the virus, it sounds like it's going to be a continuing thing. I think one of the things that has helped Saginaw in the past is that we've not been so close together. We've not been sitting on top of each other. And in light of the COVID-19, I really have a lot of problems with higher-density zoning in this city. I think we really need to look at that carefully because being able to stay a little further apart, especially in our single-family areas, I think has helped us considerably. But when you look at places even like Fort Worth and Dallas, the higher density they are, the more cases that you're having to deal with.
Other, folks, other questions? Other concerns? So we're talking about, you said 18 to 24? That's correct. So how many units would that be total? Additional units would that be to this project? We have an idea?
I can have one before too long. I don't have it right off.
Okay. I'm just, I'm thinking out loud just what that would be. I know what the acreage means, but what it'd mean is if our additional number of units. And I should have thought of that ahead of time, but I did not. Just.
It's about 120, Mayor. Yeah, that's correct.
120 total or 120?
120 total would be the increase from the zone change.
So 120 more units? Additional units?
From the MF1 to MF2.
Does that would add 120 additional units to the property?
It's, it's not solely the density, the acreage is an increase as well. So that's, it's not just a, I mean, we have additional multifamily area. I wish, I'm happy to share the existing zoning map, which, which might help. I'm not sure how the, sometimes zoning maps get done and then the streets change and things like that, but the alignment, can I pass it to you?
It's on the screen.
Oh, my, that's easy. Okay, perfect. I don't know where the, the alignment for the CC to multifamily 1 came from and who knows? And we didn't really research it, we being the collective, we. But Western Center Boulevard does go through like the alignment on the proposed zoning. So, so it's, it's been an increase in area as well as density, units per acre, to reflect the roadway alignment.
Gotcha. Do we go back to the, the new one, the proposed? Okay. Yeah, because that does have Western Center going through, which is new. That's a new change. Which would be a good change, but that is new. Okay?
So we increased the acreage to allow for the additional homes? Is that what I'm hearing?
That, that's a result, actually. We didn't, we didn't, we, the acreage is really a result of the roadway alignment more than anything.
So if we're looking at 120 additional units, how many more people are we looking at in, per unit?
I'm going to let my client answer that one.
Hi, Dorothy Parks with Providence Realty, 10201 North Central Expressway.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. So, we have been working with, Providence itself has a multifamily arm and a cottage home arm. And so both of those two different departments are the ones that we're working with to develop. We are also looking at developing the commercials. So even though it's several different types of uses, they would all be developed under the Providence umbrella. And so, as far as the unit mix goes, we would generally just do one and two-bedroom units out here. The intent for us is to do multifamily and the cottage homes. We just don't know what the layout is yet. We're still understanding what the market is for both of those. So the intent is not to, you know, is, is to develop the homes and they'd be, or the multifamily, they'd be two, one bedroom and two-bedroom. And then also, I just want to note that we probably wouldn't close on this until close to fourth quarter. And then we still have to put in all of the infrastructure, including the road, including the utilities, including the dirtwork. So the reality is that these would not come online. Best-case scenario would be at the fourth quarter of 2021, but more likely.
But again, I still stand by my position. I think one of the things that's kept Saginaw in the good condition that it is, that we're not that densely populated, we're not sitting that close together in very many spots here.
Sure. And we, we understand, you know, we've had to take a lot of precautions at our existing multifamily complexes. We've shut down the gyms. We've shut down, you know, any kind of common area. If you want to come and talk to our front office staff, you have to make an appointment, you know, things like that. So we understand that it is, you know, it's, it's having these apartment complexes.
But I'm talking outside of your complex. I mean, I'm not talking your complex. I'm, I just think we have enough high-density complexes right now based on current situations. And if we don't approve this, what happens with the project? If it still is MF1 over MF2?
Well, we wouldn't be asking for that change if we didn't need it, so we'd have to go back and evaluate.
Need it or want it?
Need it.
Why do you need it?
Well, because we have to, we need to get to a certain development yield in order for us to make the project work as well.
Mr. Mayor, just comment if I might?
Sure.
I certainly understand the concern from Councilmember Big Horse. Based on what I know now and, you know, the way the virus has affected our county, wouldn't be fact-based in regard to density. So just an illustration, South Lake, approximately the same population, far, far less dense per acre, has almost 20, the amount of cases. So I, I think if we're going to make the statement that multifamily, very traditional, acceptable density would create a public health issue, I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's supported by fact. Does that make sense?
Well, you're looking at one city compared to, you know, several other cities. And I don't want to make an assessment based on one city compared to maybe 25 others.
Sure, but your, your stance would be if a city was less dense, there was less units, they would have less, less cases.
And that seems to be the general case. I'm not basing it on one exception.
Not to get too much in specifics, but I don't really see that in Tarrant County for cities our size. If that makes sense? I'm looking at the numbers right now.
Well, I've been looking at numbers too. Because it's what I do.
Oh, that's great.
And, you know, I'm going on averages here.
Okay.
And it's, you know, my personal opinion is I'm opposed to this.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if I would agree that necessarily apartments are bad for the virus transmission. I think it's, you've got to look at a little more, a little more depth. Or I think it would be case-by-case based. I don't think just because you have an apartment, that's going to have, pose a public health issue, so. I did have a question for you. You mentioned the cottage homes. I'd forgotten about those. Can you talk about those a little bit? I had forgotten about that piece of this project.
So the cottage homes are also for rent, so they are, but they're, it's more of a townhouse-type model. So they are, they obviously go for a higher price per square foot. They have a little bit of a yard in the back usually, something large enough to put two, two chairs out there and let, you know, Fido run around. It's not, you know, a huge yard, but there is a little bit of a yard and a little bit of some amenities. They've got landscaping that is, you know, you would see normally with more of a townhome type, type of product.
How would they be laid out in relation to the multifamily? How would they be together? Would they, how would that flow?
They'd be, essentially, they'd be two separate.
Okay.
Type projects.
Gotcha. Okay. Understand. Okay. Yes, Mayor?
As far as apartments being a health hazard, as far as a pandemic, I haven't heard of any cases where they report an outbreak in any particular apartment complex throughout the United States or the world for that matter. And I think the closest thing to an apartment complex where there has been a problem are assisted living. However, they all eat together in the same cafeteria and they have activities that they all participate in together. They also have people who are employed there who go from unit to unit to unit and even other assisted living facilities. So, that may be why, why you might be thinking it would be a health hazard. And to me, there's no comparison between that and apartments. So I don't think it would pose a problem.
Other questions, counsel? Alright, so we are in a public hearing. I don't see Janice. I don't know if we have any requests to speak? I've not heard, okay. Didn't see, want to make sure I wanted to ask, since we are in a public hearing. If there are no more questions from counsel. Sorry, I'm just trying to get back to the right agenda. No more questions from counsel then, and no questions from the public, then at 6:40, 6:48, I will take us out of public hearing. I always forget to do that. And I will entertain a motion on this action item. Item number 14.
Mayor? Mayor, I move to approve item 14 for consideration and actions regarding the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve, approval on the request of the changing of the zoning of approximately 76.363 acres out of the J. Walker Survey extract.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor, second? Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Alright, so we have a tie. What do we do? We take no action, right?
Yeah, a tie means the, the item does not move forward.
Okay.
So you, you can entertain alternate motions, although I don't know if, you can entertain alternate motions. I don't know if there is a modification that would change the outcome, however.
Gotcha, okay. My preference with this would be we take it back and we discuss with the applicant, see what they want to do on this. And I don't think we want to make any changes right now. I think the best thing is to take it back and discuss with the applicant. All right? Fair enough. So that's item 14. So moving forward, item 15, consideration action regarding agreement between the City of Saigon and HUB International for Benefits Consulting. For that, Melanie, Melanie McManus, Director of Human Resources, welcome.
Good evening. I can't do that. Good evening. Just wanted to talk about the insurance benefits for the city. In mid-March, we explored changing benefit plans and we started meeting with insurance consultants to find out the best benefits and the most affordable price for the employees and the city, since last year was a 22% increase. After reviewing all this, the best broker that we, the broker of choice is Hub International that we're looking at and would like to choose them. The current savings that we would have would be like $96,000. Currently, we're on a commission-based fee and it's about $100,000 per year. Flat rate fee would be $37,500. And then if we introduce and add tax savings for insurance trust, we'd say 1.75 on sales tax. And so that we're, that's where it comes up to the $96,000 worth of savings. So we would like to recommend that you approve the contract with Hub International for this next budget year. And if you have any questions, I'll answer them.
And did this go through the city, the employee committee?
No, not yet.
Okay, gotcha. All right, Council, questions? Okay, all right. If not, if no questions, I will entertain a motion.
May I make a motion that we pass the agreement between the city and Hub International for benefits?
Thank you. Cindy, second. All those in favor raise your right hand? Those opposed, excellent. Thank you, Melanie. Good job. All right, item number 16, consideration action regarding interlocal agreement with Tarrant County governing allocation of federal assistance funds for the City of Saigon. For that, City Manager Gabe Brain.
Mayor and Council, I'm getting some condensation, so if it looks like I'm tearing up, I'm not. It's just some sweat beating. The Tarrant County Judge Glenn Whitley in the Commissioners Court approved an interlocal agreement to provide federal funds on a per capita basis to cities. These funds would reimburse eligible expenses related to the virus. We intend, pending the City Council's approval, to submit all of our applicable expenses for reimbursement through the county. And, you know, very thankful for the pass-through and the way Tarrant County is handling it. Mayor, I know you've been involved with several of the conference calls. Tarrant County is really working well together and this provide much-needed relief. So one of the caveats is that the money can't be used for lost revenue. It has to be used for expenses directly attributable to the circumstance. So Kim and staff are working on that right now and will plan on, pending approval, submitting that very soon.
And what do we think are applicable expenses, are eligible expenses?
So on a per capita basis, we'd be eligible for about 1.2 million. We wouldn't have incurred that much expense, so I don't want to commit to a number now. But we're certainly looking at everything that would be eligible to be reimbursed.
I'm just talking with the categories that would be potentially reimbursed.
Sure, so categories, so things like overtime in police, fire, and public works, direct expenses related to the virus, so sanitation-type products, personal protective gear, that sort of thing.
Furloughed employees?
No.
Can you repeat your question, Cindy?
I asked about, does it cover the furloughed employees?
Yeah, my understanding, my understanding this time is no, but we'll definitely look into that, so.
And because I think it goes against our management, financial management policy that we approved earlier this year?
So the only employees, just for the record, the only employees that have been on furlough, that is, they're still employees, but we didn't have any hours for them for the month of May, are part-time employees in the recreation center and the senior center. They are eligible for unemployment. I believe a couple of those folks have filed for unemployment, so that would be their, mitigate their financial impact. So that's why off the top of my head, I don't think furloughed employees would be eligible for reimbursement, but that's something we'll definitely look into.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Good. Any other questions, Council? All right, so I will, if not, if no other questions, I'll entertain a motion on this interlocal agreement. Cindy, second. All those in favor raise your right hand? Those opposed? Excellent. Thank you. Okay, now we are, so item number 17 is recessing workshop at 6:56. All right, I have a question, though. Why do we need to recess? And I'm looking at the, my attorney. Why do I need to recess into workshop if I'm not actually leaving? I mean, I don't go anywhere. Why am I, where am I recessing to?
You really don't need to.
Okay.
I mean, it, I think it's listed on the agenda for convenience to break it up into sections, but there's no legal requirement. It doesn't have to be called a workshop. It can be an item on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. So, item 18, discussion of central fire station design delivery considerations. For that, Dolph Johnson, Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the Charles direction staff has been busy working on selecting an architectural firm for recommendation to Council for the design of a new central fire station. We prepared a request for qualifications, sent that out, and we had 10 different firms submit from all across the state. We had a review committee comprised of Chief Spears and Chief Craver, Chief Howell, Rick Trice, Keith Reinhardt, and myself. And we reviewed each of these submitted and then ranked them according to our, who we thought would best serve our needs in this, in this project. All of them are outstanding, very good firms. We were very happy with the submitted we got. But two, two firms stood out amongst the group, and those were BRW and PGAL. So we shortlisted those firms and we set up interviews with both firms and did virtual interviews with them through Zoom. And we had the mayor and the mayor pro temp sit in on those interviews with us, so they could ask questions as well. So after the interviews and after the reference checks, consensus of the group was that BRW will be our recommendation to the City Council for approval. During the interview process, we talked about a lot of different things, but there was a lot of good information that came out of that process that I wanted to share with the Council. We discussed current and anticipated market conditions, where we are in the construction market, what costs are looking like these days. And both firms said the same thing. They're both seeing lower construction costs due to current economic conditions, about 10%. Which on a project this size is very substantial. We're talking about a million to a million and a half dollars of savings, you know, if we could get into the market now. They also agree that these, they believe these costs will hold into next year. And there's a possibility they could go even lower, which would be even better for us. Don't know that, but they do believe these prices will hold into next year. They both agreed that now's a good time to do a project like this. And they are both very comfortable with the budget we had outlined in the space needs analysis. The dollars that we've set aside for this, they're very comfortable we can get something built easily within that budgeted amount. So as we begin the process and negotiating the contract with the architects, there's some things we need to consider. And one of the things that affects how we design the contract is what you call the method of delivery. And that's basically how are we going to bid and get this, how are we going to design and get this project bid and constructed? And typically, we've used the old competitive bidding method where it's, they call it design, bid, build. And that's exactly what you do. You hire an architect, design it, you bid it out, and you award it to the lowest responsible builder. So it's basically based on the price. But the state of Texas procurement laws allows us to look at other methods. And I've listed those in the memo that you have in front of you. Competitive seal proposals similar to the competitive bidding method, but you outline a list of criteria of which you're going to rank the proposals. Of course, price is one of those, but you can include other things like experience and qualifications and things like that. So it gives you a better chance of getting someone who knows what they're doing in that project. The third method is called a CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk. And with this process, you hire the architect. And in the design process, you hire a construction manager to work along with the architect. And there are many benefits to this, to this type of delivery method. The main one being is that at a certain point in the design process, the construction manager is able to give you a guaranteed maximum price. He'll say, all right, based on what we worked out with the architects here, we can build this project for this amount. And then he assumes the financial risk for any cost overruns of the project when you get into construction. Unless it's generated by us, we can't say, oh, by the way, we want another 5,000 square feet. You can't do something like that. But if there are any cost overruns in the project, those are his responsibilities, not the city's. So this is a very popular method of awarding these types of projects or doing these type of projects for cities across the state for all types of projects. So I would recommend that we look at the CMAR approach for this project. If we use that approach, though, ideally, you would be able to have the funding in place to do the full project so that you could design it, get the construction manager to give you your guaranteed maximum price, get the contractors lined up and go immediately to construction. But the very least, we need to have funds available so that if we go this route, that, of course, the construction manager has pre-construction costs in working along with the architects. So I've talked to the architectural groups and said, for a project this size, his pre-construction costs are probably somewhere in the range of $30,000 to $60,000. So I want you to have this information in front of you when, when you're discussing debt issuance and funding for the project's construction. Our current directive was to have the project designed and ready for bids soon after and if voters approved a November bond election. Based on current market conditions, both on the financial side and construction side, you may want to consider some alternatives. With the state of the economy the way it is, I don't believe a bond package of any type would be looked favorably upon by the voters in November. That may still be the case in May, we just don't know, don't have crystal ball. But the way things are going, I just don't think you'd have a good chance of getting this approved in November. What we do know is with the bond committee's rankings and with Council's approval, that this is our number one priority. This project was our number one capital improvement priority and that it's needed sooner rather than later. In fact, chief had some more flooding this last weekend with all the rain. I think he told me they vacuumed up 140 gallons of water out of the, out of the front of the fire stations. Living areas, that we're got, teaching?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, you know, the Council may want to consider issuing COs for this project to take advantage of the soft market while current conditions are the way they are. Take advantage of the market, construction market. Our borrowing rates are unbelievably low, as you just saw with the bids coming in on our refunding. It's my understanding we have the debt capacity to build this project without raising the debt portion of the tax rate. And then again, this would allow us to use the CMAR method with a guaranteed maximum price. One other thing I want the Council to remember is that should you take a proposition to the voters to issue COs for a project and it is denied or voted down, you can't then turn around and issue COs for that project, you have to wait two years. You can take it back to the voters at the next regularly scheduled election time, but you can't, you can't fork the will of the voters by going, going back and issuing COs. So I wanted you to have that information. We're very happy with the work that's been done and working with, getting an architectural firm ready for y'all's to consider. We want to bring a contract to you. In fact, I have a meeting tomorrow afternoon with the, the recommended architect to go over the details of what we want the contract to look like. So I'm looking for some guidance from Council tonight on the way they'd like to see this proceed. And I know the City Manager has some more information he wanted to share with y'all, but then I'll answer any questions, yeah.
Mayor and Council, I have comments from Councilmember Farr, who couldn't be with us this evening. Those comments have been forwarded to, to all of you and they'll be reflected in the record of the meeting. So I'm just reading them in, in the order that he prepared them. I also printed out comments received from our bond committee, which I can read for the record as well. So again, this is from Councilmember Farr, who's watching at home. Considering market uncertainty and extreme unemployment numbers, I'm no longer in favor of a November bond election, but would support a May bond election. Passing probability is low due to the market and small, large employer outlook being considerably unstable until COVID relief, federal tax structure is known and what the presidential election outcome will be. I am in favor, again, this is Councilmember Farr, of engaging a construction manager at risk to assist in developing design based on standard form agreement for architects, AIA contract model and general conditions model. I'm in favor of a separation clause at the time of the guaranteed maximum price development that would entitle the construction manager to pre-construction services. This will allow the Council to determine the funding source, GO or CO, for the construction of the facility at a later date, but not later than January 21. This is important because the effort of the CMAR during pre-construction will serve to validate upward and downward trends in the market that can be used to help determine if CO should be issued or a GO placed on a May 2020 ballot, 2021 ballot. I spoke with Louis McLean today and communicated that so long as Property Tax General Fund and Interest and Sinking Fund Revenue did not exceed our year-to-year long-range goal totals, I could support a CO being issued for the fire station. FY21 general fund total is $6,249,975 and INS total is $3,935,319. His model supports this. Louis and I discussed using fund balance in FY21 to offset the COVID-19 sales tax dip rather than increase revenue. This really depends on how deep and long the loss curve is. If it looks like it will exceed $400,000 this fiscal year and $600,000 to $800,000 next fiscal year, we may have no choice other than to increase the revenue goal or cut services. We discussed claiming the small-city max of $500,000 as an approach to offset losses in FY 2020 tax-based projections. So if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I can read some of the comments that came from the Citizens Bond Committee.
Sure, why don't you go ahead and do that? Read the Citizens Bond Committee.
Okay.
Input, please.
So this is a, this is an order of receipt and I've sent all these to you electronically. So starting with the most recent, most recent was Brack St. Clair. I agree moving forward at this time is ideal for our city with the fire station. I wholeheartedly agree with the choice of moving forward with Brown Reynolds Watford over PGAL. That's the architecture firm. The company I work for, a masonry, drywall, and plaster, thin veneer subcontractor, has done several projects that BRW designed. Westlake Fire and EMS Station Number One, Richardson Fire Station Number Three, Plano Fire and Admin, and Prosper Police and Fire Dispatch are probably our most recent. They have beautiful buildings and their drawings are very good. I also agree that the CMAR approach to find, I also agree with the CMAR approach to finding construction manager. I can make several recommendations in that area if you'd like as well, companies that have this sort of project in their wheelhouse. Thanks for keeping us in the loop on this. I'm excited to see what comes of this. Brack. Next comment from Bond Committee Member Dom Cromwell. Everything looks great. Fire Station Number One was my main priority when I volunteered for Citizens Bond Committee. Take advantage of the low interest rates at this time. Onward and upward, let's get her done. With apostrophe ER for the record. Committee Member Catherine Johnson. I think this is a good call and I would support the $15 million now with no increase for Fire Station One and Knowles. Committee Member Jayden Lyon. I concur with previous responses. Let's take advantage of low interest rates, the ability to save the city and her citizens' funds by acting while a 10% savings can be expected via competitive bidding and move forward with proposed fire station construction and the Knowles improvement. From the Chair of the Bond Committee, Travis Albreton. Thank you for the information. I strongly agree with moving forward with the fire station at this time. We should definitely take advantage of the rate opportunity because this does save the taxpayers a lot of money. During this time, if we can complete projects by moving forward without increasing the tax rate, let's do it. tax rate, let's do it. That is my vote in the matter. Committee member Pat Shelton. Gabe, I'm in agreement with those that responded prior to me. The Fire Station needs to be done soon. Knowles I am not as excited about, but Fire Station gets a big yes. Presenting the other items would work in 2021. Committee member Shabon Lilly. Given the state of the current fire department, I support moving forward with construction of the new one. I'm not as excited about the road construction on Knowles at this time. I also agree with your staff and do not feel citizens should be approached about any increase in taxes or bonds in the near future. These projects were ideas from a different time. City improvements are the last thing on people's minds right now, and in fact, I'm hoping you and the council can come up with ways to lower the tax burden for us. Council member Rick Russell. I am good with the proposal. I would hope that the council will move forward with the rest of the items on the May 2021 election. Committee member Tim Miller. I'd say jump on this fast with interest savings and 10% or better in project cost. The only thing I'd suggest would be hard deadlines for builders and not just going with the lowest bidder. If we can get the best builder for the right price and timeframe and it doesn't cost the taxpayer any type of increase, then it's a go for me. And the last response received was committee member David Jones. I would be in favor of moving forward with the Fire Station project at this time. The road project is much needed, but is not as critical to public safety as moving the Fire Station. The current public health crisis is unfortunate, however, not capitalizing on the benefit of cost savings for construction due to the related economic climate would be a mistake. Thank you for soliciting input from the committee. Just one note, I believe that reflects 10 responses out of our committee of 13. One of the committee members has since moved out of state, so if we receive additional feedback, we'll forward that to you, mayor and council.
Counsel, thoughts? Let's discuss what do we think on this project. Let's start with you, Mayor.
I'm in favor of moving forward as quickly as possible in using certificates of obligation to fund the project.
Just have a line, Cindy.
Question, just opposed, I'm not familiar with the C-MAR.
Is your light on?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Question, because I'm not familiar with the C-MAR. We have a guaranteed maximum price. Is that going to be the best price that we could expect? Or I imagine it's going to be a little bit higher because they are accepting some risk, but what's the possibility of coming in below that guaranteed maximum?
Well, it's, I mean, you could possibly get a lower bid, but you'd also run the risk of getting a contractor that doesn't know how to do this if you go with our typical method we've used in the past. So we can give them a budget to work within and they can, they will deliver the project within that budget. And if there's any cost overruns, the financial risk is his, is not ours. So I have not personally done a C-MAR. I've always done the typical design bid build, but like I said, I've had, I've had major issues with that in the past and I really believe that this is the way to go and, you know, I think you're going to get the best value, you're going to get the, you're absolutely going to get the most value, best value, most bang for your buck by using the C-MAR process.
And I do want to clarify that this $15 million is for Knowles and the Fire Station.
Yeah, mayor and council, if I might address. So depending on what the council would direct us to do, we won't know what the true cost of the Fire Station is until we have bids in hand. So to address your comment about the C-MAR, Dolph is correct when the way the C-MAR arrangement, and I've been involved directly with a few projects, the way it works is your construction manager is someone you select on qualifications, not just low bid. Low bid jobs sometimes can promise you the moon and then not deliver. Everybody kind of understands that dynamic. By selecting the construction manager, and I really wish council member Farr was here because this is literally his bread and butter, does it every day, the construction manager can work with the architect to finish plans and that's, at that point, they submit the guaranteed maximum price, which is bottom dollar barring any unforeseen change order. The at-risk in the C-MAR arrangement is just that. The construction firm is taking full risk. So if their subs, their subcontractors go up in price, they eat that cost and whatever overhead they have built in that project, they take that on. So, you know, as a delivery method, I think it makes practical sense, especially given our current environment, which is why we brought it to your attention.
Cindy, is part of your question in the construction manager, if they send us, get us a bid for whatever the number is, we're like, that's way too much. We can work back with them, work back and forth, say no, see what we can do, right? Was that part of your question? Just, we're not stuck with that bid. We can negotiate with them or discuss other alternatives as well.
Well, we were looking at 14 and a half million for a Fire Station. Now we're looking at 15 for a station and road construction. So, I mean, that in itself sounds like an improvement.
So.
I was just trying to understand how this worked.
Sure, sure. So I guess I.
I'm not disagreeing with the process.
I didn't, I forgot to answer the last part. So obviously, everybody wants the project to come in as inexpensive as possible, right? To present the best value. Let's say we get a Fire Station bid that's $10 million. That additional money we would have in capacity, we could apply to the bond committee, citizens' bond committee's second priority project, which was Knowles. You know, we could do the northern phase or a portion of the northern phase where there's drainage issues. That's kind of the rationale in that amount.
Mr. Tucker? Thumbs up specifically what?
I think we need to move forward on this.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Mayor Prokhorov?
Okay, I have a couple of questions. The first thing being, my thought, we need the Fire Station, I'm not against it at all. But we're going to finish this bridge. And when the bridge is finished, we're going to have another way to do the traffic, to get traffic movement, which is going to come down Knowles because when it comes down, it's going to be able to turn on the Knowles. So I feel like that we need to really work on Knowles also. My second thing is, do we know what's going to happen with the property taxes? Because right now, Ted isn't, when I called yesterday to protest my house, they said they're not changing the taxes, so how's that going to affect us? Because of COVID-19, they said that it's going to stay the same. I mean, commercial's gone, whatever, but residential's not going, they're not going to do that to the residents. So how is that going to affect our?
So generally, at this point in the year, we don't have solid information. We just got our first roll in April and each month, we get a tax roll that's more reflective of where we'll end up and where we make decisions on the budget. I think that this year is very similar to past budget years in that we have an increase in new value. So if you go on the east side of the city, Basswood Crossing, Bar C, all those houses, in fact, I live in Basswood Crossing, that weren't there a year ago are now on the tax roll positive. New value can help us lower the existing tax rate. We also have existing homes that, and Kim knows the details better, were kind of undervalued based on the market, that some existing homes, my understanding, are increasing in value.
But that's what you were saying, wasn't it? That's what I'm asking.
So what I can tell you with certainty is that with the new rules, the new property tax rules in place, Senate Bill Two, we can, well, there's a couple of caveats, but we can take in 3.5% more in new revenue on existing property values, which for us will lower our tax rate. So very similar to last year in that we should be able to bring in some amount of new revenue that's up to the council to decide and lower the tax rate. Now, on the debt side of the equation, we should be able to, because of growth, because of existing debt that's coming off, refinancing, you just approved refinancing, save money, we can actually issue about 15 million on top of the eight and a half million the council's already committed to in design projects this summer in our existing tax rate. No tax rate increase. So does that answer your question? Yeah.
Okay. And I do agree with your method of going with the, yeah. Because there's always unforeseen things that come up in construction that don't work out and I don't want to get stuck with the bill. I don't think the city would either.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'll just, I'll remind the council of the preliminary numbers we had programmed for the Fire Station. And the total project cost, we had estimated at 14 and a half million. The actual construction cost was around 11.4 million. Design fees was 1.164. We had some other soft costs. But we also had a 15% contingency in there, which is $1.9 million. So, you know, in case the market changed, you know, unfavorably against us. So based on the current prices we're seeing, you know, we could save well over $1 million on the, on the construction cost of the station and eliminate the need for quite a bit of that contingency. So I just wanted to remind the council members of those numbers from the, from the space needs analysis and preliminary look.
Valerie, anything else? This is easy.
I'm sort of moving forward.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Okay. All right. My thought is, I think this is, it's unfortunate that the world we're in right now, but I think for us, it's very, we're very fortunate. I think with lower interest rates and lower construction costs, I think it's a perfect time to pounce. My thought would be we move forward with the full 15 million and we get as fire station as cheap as we can, not cheap, but a quality of fire station. And whatever the dollars are left, we pump all that into Knowles and we do as much in Knowles as we can, as quick as we can. Talking to Gabe this afternoon about where the flooding issues on Knowles, and it seems to be the most flooding issues at the northern end, which is Phase One, right? Yeah. So we do, we do, my goal is this, to do Fire Station and Phase One, get the Fire Station going, get Knowles going as far as we can, get rid of that drainage problem, alleviate traffic a little bit, and then we can pursue how we do the rest of Knowles sooner than later, but not with this original money. So I like the idea that, talking to Lewis about the no tax increase, I think that's a very big selling point. I think I'm, and after going through this, these calls with the architects and with the chief and everybody else, I learned some things about what our needs are for Fire Station that was very helpful for me as well. And I'm even more adamant that we need to move forward quickly on a Fire Station. And well, as the weekend showed, pumping out 140 gallons of water is just not a healthy way for folks to live. I think it's, I think our time is running out, is running short on that Fire Station. It's a beautiful Fire Station, but I think our time's running short. So I'd like to move forward quicker than not. That's my thoughts. So I think what I heard is everybody here is okay with moving forward. So really tonight, you're looking for a direction and moving forward, right, and how to move forward. So I guess question number two is on the construction manager at risk. Does everybody want to try that idea? I like that idea. We've mostly done the bid process in the past and we've got burned a couple of times. We've, we've accepted bids from folks that were the low bidder, but they also had a lot of other projects going and they delayed it or slower than Christmas coming. So I think construction manager at risk might help us with knocking down the dollars, but also with quality and with the timing as well. I would anticipate a construction manager at risk is going to be a little more, we'll know what their projects are and where they, what their capacity is. We get somebody that can do this in a timely manner. I want to get this done, you know, I don't want it to drag out. So I like that idea. Are the folks, council, are you okay with trying the construction manager at risk process? Moving forward with that? Everybody good with that? I think you got your direction, Dolph.
Thank you, mayor. And I will say that we will, as part of our contract with architects, we'll have, of course, certain deadlines in there and dates and they'll, they'll be submitting, have different submittal phases where you'll have the opportunity to see where we're headed with this thing. And so we'll certainly keep y'all on the loop on that, but we'll begin negotiating a contract with them starting tomorrow and hopefully have something for y'all quickly.
Yeah, and one other thing they mentioned was talking about how the design process would work and going even, one focus, one of the groups wanted to go with the community and get some input from the community as well, come to council to get input from us as well. So we'll be involved in this. I think that's a good, for everybody to know that this is not going to be, they're not going to go away and come back and say, this is what it would look like. We, including of course, the chief and everybody else, will be involved. With this kind of money off this kind of project, I mean, this is a Fire Station that will be a showpiece of our community for the next 40 or 50 years. I hope it outlives me, that's what I hope. So I hope it's beautiful and it'll endure a long time.
And we're looking at doing this on the property purchased here at Amber and McElroy, that's going to be the best fit for us.
Yeah, this will be another step in our cityscape that we have been, and our sort of our, our main street, we're talking here on West McElroy, so that will move that along as well with aesthetics and everything else. So I think it's some good things. So you got direction you need? Excellent. Thank you, council. All right, so.
Mayor.
Yes?
Over here.
Oh, yes, Brent, sorry.
We don't know who's talking.
I know, over here. Gotcha.
I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to interject quickly and I hate to retreat back to the rezoning item, but I wanted to just provide everyone with full disclosure of the legal consequence of the result of the vote. Our zoning ordinance prohibits, so we were left with the impression that staff was going to meet with the applicant and discuss possible modifications, et cetera. So just for full disclosure, the zoning ordinance prohibits reapplications for any item that's been denied for a minimum of 12 months.
How long?
12 months.
12 months, okay.
So this application in its, in its current form, unless there is a significant change in fact, could not be reconsidered by council as a new application for an entire year. With that said, your council meeting policies do provide for a limited scope opportunity for reconsideration of an item. Rick spoke briefly with the applicant while you all were discussing the Fire Station item. A member of council who voted on the prevailing side, and in this case, the prevailing side would be the side that voted in such a manner as to result in the denial of the application, may move to reconsider. And I'm not suggesting or urging that outcome, it's just for full disclosure, this is, these are your rights. It's my understanding because of the limitation on reapplication for a year, the applicant would instead request a tabling of the item. Number one, to see if they could address, and I'll let the applicant speak if you, if you choose, it's your choice, to meet with various members of council and attempt to address some of the concerns. And number two, to provide for an opportunity for this application to be heard by a full council. Obviously, Mr. Farr is not present tonight and his vote would have definitively determined the outcome rather than a denial as a result of a tie. So I leave you with that and that opportunity.
My question is, first of all, let me say at 7:28, you can be back in regular session. So secondly, we already voted on this. So can we take another vote to table or how would, how could that work?
So a motion to reconsider would be made first.
Okay.
It would have to be made by one of the three members that voted against the motion to approve.
So we could do that tonight?
Tonight.
Okay.
Yes. That is a procedural motion, so it doesn't require a separate item on the agenda.
I see.
The topic is still the rezoning, okay? So if, if the motion for reconsideration passes, then the item is just simply brought back before council anew. And you, as I mentioned earlier, you can entertain alternate motions, including a motion to table.
Okay. Does everybody understand that?
So if we table it, just to be sure, if we table, if we reconsider it and then we table it, then they're going to go back to the drawing board and come back to us, basically.
Well, that's my understanding. I don't want to speak for the applicant. If you'd like to hear from the applicant, that's, that's your right and privilege.
But they would have the option to do so.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
They would have that option.
Okay. All right, so council, what was the pleasure of the council on this? You've heard what the attorney says, what would y'all like to do? I'm talking to one, two, three people. What would y'all like to do?
I'll mention also, we did, I apologize for continuing to interrupt. We did mention the option for the applicant to, instead of pursuing straight zoning, to pursue a planned development style application that carries with it a detailed site plan that you all could review on a micro level. They did indicate that they don't have the ability to commit to that this evening, but that is something that could be considered, that could perhaps, that would certainly afford council more control over the look, the density, the design, et cetera. afford council more control over the look, the density, the design, et cetera, in a much greater degree than straight zoning would.
Okay.
Okay.
So, any of y'all, would you like to, to do the reconsideration? Motion to reconsider, is that what we call?
I think we could reconsider so that they could have a chance to redesign, to table it for later, and you could-
Would you like to make a motion?
Could you, yes, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I don't even know which number it is here.
This is simply a motion to reconsider item fourteen.
Okay.
And that can be seconded by anyone.
Okay.
So, I'm going to make a motion to reconsider the, the considering action for recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for their approval of their quest for the seventy-six point six one three acres out of the Walker.
Item fourteen.
Item fourteen.
Okay.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll be happy to second it because I just think it's just too soon to, to make the decision on the-
Okay. So, second?
All those in favor of reconsidering the site?
All opposed, okay. Now, back to it. We're back in item fourteen. Don't it need to open back a public hearing?
No, the public hearing has been legally concluded and satisfied.
Excellent, okay.
Okay. So, now we need to make a motion to table item fourteen, so that you have a chance to redesign or-
Discuss.
Discuss it, okay? How's that?
You could-
There you go.
I can't breathe with this thing on.
I know, right.
So, do I have a motion to table?
So, you could table it till the next meeting, or a, a different meeting that is a date certain, if, if they need more time than two weeks?
Let's, let's table it TBD. Let's not put a date on it. Let's table it until-
Okay. Till they have a chance to get your-
Yes. I don't want, I don't want to put a date on it, yeah.
And then you can bring it back to the council.
Does that sound fair to everybody?
Okay.
And then I'll second that also.
Okay. So, it's-
Did it demote?
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'm sorry, Charles, you have a question?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Oh.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to table item fourteen until you decide when you can come back to us and bring it to us with a redesign.
A second?
And I'll second it then.
Any second? All those in favor of tabling? All opposed? Excellent.
Is that better?
We are tabled.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Good luck, thank you.
I look forward to seeing you again soon.
No, appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank y'all. Thank you, Bren. Thanks for bringing that back around. All right. We've done nineteen. Item twenty. So, at seven thirty-two, we can be into executive session pursuant to Texas government code five five one dot oh seven one and five five one dot oh eight seven.
Yes, this is the schools that you're going to be attending. I have a question.
Give me time, what time is it? What's the official time?
Eight nineteen.
Eight nineteen. In return from executive session, I will intend to adjourn. Second? Those in favor? Eight nineteen. Janice, you got it? Thank you all.
Jess, this is the schools that you're going to be attending. I think, uh, what was it, nine days or something like that?
Give me time. What time is it? What's the official time?
Eight nineteen.
Eight nineteen. In return from executive session, I will adjourn.
Second.
Second? Those in favor? Eight nineteen. Jess, you got it?
Thank you.
Thank you all.